We're gonna call the meeting to order. It's the Marion Common Council Regular Meeting. It is September 3rd. It's now 7:00 PM in City Hall. Welcome, everybody, and we're gonna go in right into this evening's prayer and welcome Pastor Joe Andy from God's House Church. If you want to come on up Pastor and lead us in prayer. Just wanna hit the red button.
Before I start, Brian told me that you guys don't get enough thank yous, so I wanna personally tell you guys, thank you for all your hard work and all your tireless work behind the scenes. All right. God, as we gather here today to come up with a plan to rebuild this city and make it great, I want to give thanks and praise for all the elected and all the appointed officials here today. I want to give thanks for all the work that they do behind the scenes in order to make this city great for everyone. God, please put your hand of grace and love upon them. Please bless them with the gift of discernment and good judgment. Similar to all the great heroes of the Bible, no one and none of us can ever be more in public than we are in private. So as we are here today, working and building behind the scenes, let the work we do behind the scenes be shown in public to make everyone and everything better. So dear Lord, let's uplift this city, let's uplift these officials, let's uplift our mayor, let's uplift all these residents here in Marion, and in your name we shall always pray. Amen.
Thank you, and we'll have Councilman Jim Brunner lead us in the pledge.
Mr. President, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you Pastor Joe Andy and Councilman Brunner. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Fordice.
Here.
Brunner.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Calgill.
Here.
McKinley.
Here. Okay, we're gonna move into the community spotlight, and tonight we're going to be spotlighting Rebecca Zirkle from the Hive Mind Market. So Rebecca, if you want to come on all the way up. And I, you know, social media is a great thing, and I've seen a lot of posts with the Hive Mind Market. I've been to it many times. You just want to stand over here. And I think it's a phenomenal thing we have in this community. But I'm going to let Rebecca explain more what Hive Mind Market is and help bring some awareness and attention to a wonderful asset we have in the community. So go ahead, Rebecca.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I see some friends in the crowd. I would love to introduce you guys to Hive Mind Market if you've never been there. First of all, my name's Rebecca Zirkle. I'm the founder and the owner. If you haven't heard of Hive Mind, we're deeply rooted in Marion, and our purpose is to provide safe and clean consistent space for small businesses to come and grow their business and connect with the community. Starting a small business is really hard, so entrepreneurs come to Hive Mind for structure, guidance, friendship, opportunity, marketing, and support. All of our regular events happen on Saturday mornings in the Kohl's parking lot from 10:00 to 3:00, and we would love to see you there. We also collaborate on other events such as this past, this year's past Eclipse of Palooza and the City of Marion Birthday Party and the State of the City Address, which are in our scope. In the past, Hive Mind started in 2022. From May until October of 2023, we hosted 72 events, which contained over 1,500 pop-up shops from small businesses located around Indiana as well as out of state with our furthest maker coming from West Virginia. We have lots of interest outside of Marion for events, places like Hartford City, Warren, Columbus, Ohio, places in Texas, places all the way in Florida. They're like, we love what's going on. We would love for you to come here, so come join us. So something like that may be what we do in the future. Currently, we are in our summer season. It has been the hardest season to date for Hive Mind over the last three years for a number of reasons, but we were forced into a license contract with Kohl's at the beginning of our season, which took away our opportunity to host our favorite food trucks and our favorite local musicians and our favorite nonprofits and places that connect with the community and hand out free information and make our city great. This came as a result of an unfortunate situation that stemmed from our store last winter, but we have a much better location for this winter. The Hive will be reopening on November 1st at Boston Hill Center, right here in downtown. We'll be open multiple days a week with all of your favorite makers, bakers, artists, creators. We're gonna pack them all in there. We got room for about 50. So that'll be great, and looking forward to next summer, since this summer has been a little rough. And we love to support our community. I have purchased land for Hive Mind Market in West Marion, and the orchard at Hive Mind Market on Miller Avenue will be open and the permanent home for Hive Mind Market in 2025. So we look forward to seeing you guys all there, and thank you for supporting us, and thank you for having me here. We currently have a little class going on over at CSA, the Hive Mind Makers Series, so I've got a jet back over there. We're doing an intro to acrylic pouring tonight, so.
Well, we appreciate you, all the efforts you've put into the Hive Mind Market, and I think it is a wonderful asset. I learned a lot about it. And I saw it on social media or your post about going to the Boston Hill Center. I thought that was phenomenal. What a great use of space. So just want to need everyone to support them throughout the winter and through the summer and keep them going. So everyone, thank you Rebecca. Hold on, we gotta get a picture. Everyone wants to get a picture real quick. Let it do that picture. We gotta get as much attention online for her and grow that business. Come on over. Do you want to come out in front here? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, and we're gonna move into what's now called the City Employees Spotlight. It used to be the First Responder Spotlight, but we can still recognize first responders anytime, but now we've opened it up to the whole city. However, their first city spotlight is a first responder spotlight. And so I would like to invite Chief Gilbert up to the front, Marion Police Chief. He would like to present a few words to some officers. Welcome, Chief.
Welcome. Thank you. With Mayor Morrell, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd ask permission to come forward and present a couple of words, a civilian award and word to two officers.
Come on up.
Members of the council and the audience, our first award is to be our highest civilian award that we give from the police department to a civilian who's helped us in some way. And tonight I'd like to call David Slusher forward to receive what we call the Friend of the Department Award, which is symbolized by a coin, very similar to the one that all of our officers carry, to symbolize their affiliation with the police department. We want to do this with Dave because recently he helped our officers out. There was a gentleman running a neighborhood. We couldn't catch him, to be quite honest with you, and some of our best officers were on that case. Our officers are familiar with Dave, saw him out his yard and said, hey, Dave, that's that guy. As he was accelerating away from our, almost hit officers. And Dave, I think, thought about turning around and go back in the house, but he couldn't do it. And there's video if you want to see it, but he assisted us in apprehending this person. Quite frankly, he needed some help. He was having an episode, so tackled the person and assisted us in getting that person into custody. So when I, when I heard what happened, I was not surprised. And so without further delay, to give our highest civilian award, I'll read this. "Award as Friend of the Department, presented by the Marion Police Department in honor of David W. Slusher for your steadfast support of MPD officers and your bravery in the apprehension of a dangerous suspect on August 24, 2024 in the area of Chapel Pike and Denver Drive, given with gratitude on the third day of September of 2024 in Marion, Grant County, Indiana." So Dave, I'm gonna have Captain Michael Ross come forward and actually give the awards and see who's in charge of those officers. David, thank you for your assistance, and we couldn't be more grateful.
Chief, you ought to show that video to the Kohl's. They could maybe use it.
The next, this, these awards are one and several that we give officers for various acts of distinction. This award tonight is called the Award for Meritorious Service. It's the Medal of Merit, if you will. And we're gonna award those tonight to Officer Billy Cole and Officer Scott Patrick Fletcher. Gentlemen, if you would come forward, please. These gentlemen actually, these gentlemen are receiving the award of merit for meritorious service for a life-saving measure, which falls into that category. I can tell you firsthand that it just so happened that I was actually meeting with Officer Scott Fletcher the night that this happened to let him know that he'd been awarded a K-9, which is a great accomplishment in itself. And a call came in, and I don't know if you know, the officers wear earpieces, and I couldn't hear what was being dispatched, but he was. And as we were, I thought it'd be a nice slow walk out the door to tell him, thank you, you did a good job. And he jetted out down the hallway and ran double speed to a call I had no clue about, and it was this call. A long story short, a gentleman in our community was attempting to take his own life. And these two officers were dispatched, Officer Fletcher and Officer Cole. They responded and were able to remove this person from hanging himself and take him down to the ground and provide life-saving measures. And the person survived because of their actions, or he would not be here today or be alive today. So that is the short story. So even meeting with the chief of police, said, I don't have time for you right now, and left, left. So as I did before with the civilian award, I'm gonna read the text of this award. This is called the Award of Meritorious Service, presented to Officer Billy Cole and Officer Scott Fletcher for extraordinary action above and beyond the call of duty on July 24, 2024 regarding life-saving measures of a citizen who had attempted suicide. Your actions on this date saved human life and represent the highest level of professionalism, courage, and effectiveness in your duty to protect the citizens of Marion, Indiana, and this serves as everlasting proof of meritorious service, given with gratitude on the third day of September, 2024, in Marion, Grant County, Indiana. Thank you, gentlemen.
You mind if we get a photo with the council with them too? Or you're still presenting awards? Go for it. You need to present that.
I'm gonna point out that this is the second time that Scott's received this award, so even more extraordinary. Gentlemen, second award, take center, and let's get a photo of the man.
Right, right here, here. Yeah, here we go.
They're big boys. You better squeeze in there.
Two, three. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, well, thank you, guys. Thank you for the other officers that came in as well and recognized their fellow officers. So we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Again, this is a new style or new agenda with the new rules we have. It's gonna be a little different tonight, so consent agenda allows us to approve multiple things at one time. However, this evening, we've got, under the consent agenda includes the approval of minutes, consideration of pre-approved claims, and consideration of claims. Normally, I would ask for a motion to approve all those, however, there were some adjustments to the minutes that Second Deputy Clerk Richard had handed out with some highlights. I hope everybody had an opportunity to take a look. Just a few minor adjustments to the minutes. There were just some, we'll say wording changes, some typo, not even typo, just some editing of some words. Instead of seconded, it's second. But the one that I asked her to add was, at the last meeting, we had the alley vote for the alley maintenance. I was the only one that voted no, but nothing was in the minutes about why I voted, so I asked her to add the summary of some things I'd said on why I voted no. So I just wanted it on the record, so if everyone has a chance to look at that. And I would ask for a motion to amend the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion to amend the minutes as presented by Vice President Calgill, seconded by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Abstain.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. All right, the amended amendment has been approved. And then, so now what we do is we can literally just ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, and it would cover all three of those. So I would accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Brunner, seconded by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. All right, and moving into committee reports, do any council members have any committee reports they'd like to share? Councilwoman Devine.
The Board of Works met this morning, and I was detained, but I was hoping that Mr. Graff might want to come up and give a little information about the bids that were being let through the agenda.
Good evening. I was on time. Just so. So we had, we opened bids today for the Marion Animal Carrying Control Kennels. We had three bidders that we looked at. We didn't make, we made no decision today. I'm taking them under advisement to make sure that all the paperwork is correct. It did look like the most responsive bidder came in under our estimate, which is a good thing. So if there's some money left, there's probably some other items that we could use that for. And then the other bid was for the downtown brick removal and replacement with asphalt. We only had one bidder on that one. That one was a little bit over engineer's estimate, but knowing that we're gonna be doing that in 2025, that probably didn't surprise me too much. So that, that was from Brooks Construction. So again, nothing was awarded. We'll, we'll look the bid specs over to make sure that they've got everything in there that we requested, and we'll pick that up at the next Board Works. So there you go.
Thank you. And Chief, did you want to mention the officers you swore in today? Did you want to mention the four officers you swore in today at the Board of Works, or? I'm making you guys give my committee report since I missed the meeting.
She didn't tell me she's gonna put you all on the spot.
No, I, it's a sound problem back there. I, no, we, we have three officers who just graduated from the academy, and Officer Kelly Carter and Mitchell, and we swore them in today. We have four who are at the academy now, and we'll have two more going as it stands right now in the session after that. We swore three in today, and they're finishing up their FTO program, and they'll be hitting the streets if they do their job solo very soon. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilman Klein.
Plan Commission met the 27th. I was there for the whole thing. It approved two amendments to the Marion Consolidated Economic Development Area. One removed several parcels that were underperforming, and that allows that TIF money to go into the city's TIF fund, and the other added the River Rock Lofts to the Consolidated Development Area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Klein, any other committee reports or liaison reports? All right, thank you. We're gonna move into unfinished business, and that'd be General Ordinance 12-2024, Third Reading.
An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Marion, Indiana, amending Marion City Code, Chapter 153 zoning ordinance, and providing for the effective date thereof, the rezoning of 912 South Miller Avenue and two parcels on West Ninth Street. Speaking, City Engineer and City Planner, Mike Graff.
Good evening. So this is the, the, the third reading. So if there's anything that you have, anything that I wasn't able to answer on the second reading or the first reading, I'll be glad to help you with that.
Any council members with questions? All right, not seeing any questions, I would accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass General Ordinance Number 12, 2024.
I have a motion by Councilman Kane, seconded by Councilman Klein. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Sure you're probably gonna hang out for the next one. Moving into Additional Appropriation Ordinance 33-2024, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
An ordinance of the City of Marion, Indiana, appropriating from the Wheel Tax Fund to miscellaneous contractual services, the amount of $57,931.11. Speaking.
I guess I'll do it.
Mike Graff.
There you go. I know a little bit more about, about it than Dana, but I, I'd love to have her come up if she wants to come up. So again, this is similar to a few that you've done in the past. This is some money that we actually were allocated for from the county back, back last year, but we really didn't find out that we had an issue until earlier this year. And Linda Fall did a very nice job of locating it for us, sent several emails till we finally got the funds put into our account. But because it was not budgeted, and this is, this is, will be an appropriation in order for us to put that in the fund so that we can use it for community crossing dollars or, or some other paving money, depending on how much we do for the community crossings. Be glad to entertain any questions.
I have a question. So you talked about the brick being replaced and that those, a bid being a little over. This money could go towards that if needed?
It, it could if we get it under contract, because like I said, it won't happen. That would probably happen until 2025. But if I allocate the funds, yes, that, that would definitely be something we could use it for.
Great. Any council members with questions? All right, I would entertain a motion. Oh, my bad, we're in second reading, my bad. So thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. We're gonna move this into public hearing. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on this, they can make their way up to the microphone at this time. I know it's a thrilling topic, so don't get too fast, so. All right, I don't see anyone making their way to the microphone, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And now I'd entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move that we suspend the rules on Appropriation Ordinance Number 33, 2024.
A motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Kane, seconded by Vice President Calgill. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Rules have been suspended. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass Appropriation Ordinance Number 33, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kane, seconded by Vice President Calgill. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. All right, Preparation Ordinance 33-2024 has passed. And moving into General Ordinance 13-2024, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
An ordinance amending ordinance number nine, 2004 tree ordinance. Speaking, City Engineer and City Planner, Mike Graff.
Good evening once again. So this is basically taking some previous ordinances that, the language was a little archaic. It had some verbiage in about tree boards, and quite honestly, the, the tree boards that were provided under this ordinance back in 2002 and 2004 have never been followed. It required council appointees and the mayor appointees to have a five-person tree board, which it's kind of... it's kind of multi-layered to, uh, you know, to try to figure out things, uh, I'd spoken, uh, a couple of years back with, uh, Vice President Calgill, uh, about this, and we kinda let it just ride, and I think it's come to the point now where as we're, as we continue to, to go through the process of trees and the blight and, and, uh, everything that, that, that the trees within the right-of-way, um, undertake, I think it was, it's kind of time to revisit this, uh, there is, I, you were supplied with the, a couple of previous ordinances, you were supplied with a yellow line to kind of tell you what we're removing, and some verbiage that we're replacing to try to define what the trees are and whose responsibilities there are, um, so it's, there's quite a bit of material there, um, so I'm not gonna belabor it other than i- if you've had a chance to look at it, I'm sure you probably jotted some questions down that you could, that you wanna ask me, and I'll be glad to offer any assistance to answering those, and we can just go from there, so, see, see what you, what you'd like to do with it.
Any council members with questions? All right, okay, I appreciate it, I, I will say that I think what, uh, I know the mayor and I were talking about this from the very beginning of the year, and I brought up, we have all these dead trees in the right-of-way, so we literally are waiting to cut down dead trees and right-of-ways until this passes, because we wanted to follow the rules properly, because we approved the money a couple of months ago for that, and then realized, oh, well, we don't have a tree board to approve it, and so that, we're just waiting to cut them down until we, we wanna follow our rules, and so we're changing the rules to make it, uh, we have sometimes dead trees that are hazardous to the community, and the last thing we want is it to become a political issue, and we have a dead tree waiting to fall, and a tree board is holding it up, or decisions being, um, held up, so we, we need the mayor, we need code enforcement to be able to make quick decisions on taking down hazardous trees, and I think this is the right step forward, so. Okay, we are gonna move it to the public hearing, thank you, Mike, appreciate it. So if anyone would like to speak in regards to this general ordinance, make your way up to the microphone now. I don't see anybody moving towards the mic, so I'm gonna assume there's no comment, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass general ordinance, or, uh, suspend the rules from general ordinance thirteen twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion to suspend the rules by Vice President Calgill, the second by Councilman Kane, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, rules have been suspended, and I would entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to now, uh, pass general ordinance number thirty-three, twenty twenty-four, or no, we already did that one, how about we pass thirteen twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Motion by Vice President Calgill, second by Councilman Brunner, any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. General Ordinance thirteen twenty twenty-four has passed, and again, um, thank you, Mike, for having all this language put together for us, much appreciated. Moving into new business, I will just point out, for those that are holding on to a, uh, agenda, maybe hasn't seen one before, part of the new rules is that, uh, any, any further business requires an executive summary, so this is the last time you'll see unfinished business without an executive summary, a new finished, or new business with an executive summary, so you'll now notice any appropriations, requests, ordinances, um, not only will it have its legal language, but a more plain-language executive summary, just for the general public to be able to understand more what is being discussed, so. Just wanted to give that before people were wondering why there's an executive summary there, so. Moving on to additional appropriation thirty-six twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, budget first reading.
Mayor Morell is set to present the twenty twenty-five City of Marion budget to the City Council, outlining projected expenses for the upcoming year. This budget reflects the administration's vision for Marion in twenty twenty-five, providing a roadmap for the city's strategic improvements and essential developments.
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right, well, what an honor it is to be here, thank you all, City Council, um, honored to be able to do this, I'm looking forward to be able to present, uh, the budget for two thousand, uh, twenty-five. This year, um, our main focus from the administration was the investment in people, so I like to think about all the assets that we have and what we, um, have as a city, and the number one asset that I think that we have as a city are our people, we have amazing employees, and we wanna do everything we can to be able to invest in them, so our budget for two thousand twenty-five is a reflection of that vision, um, to invest in people. So I'm not a person that likes to talk about the past much or dwell on the past, but only about how it informs us to be prepared for the future. So I did a little bit of research, and I had my controller's office pull some history, um, for us, and I'll just share briefly what it is, so two thousand twenty-one, um, negative three hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Two thousand twenty-two, negative nine hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. Ne- uh, two thousand twenty-three, negative three million, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, two thousand twenty-four, negative two million, forty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. So, the budget we present to you today, um, while the last year that I read, you showed a negative in our general fund, the budget that, budget that we present, I present to you today is balanced, and that was one of the biggest accomplishments, and one of the things that we wanted to do and pull off for the City of Marion, so, uh, without further ado, I won't talk too long, and I'll, um, let's, let's move forward, any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that, any council members have questions, I will say, we did have two prior Budget Committee meetings, uh, probably all in total close to four hours, um, for those that weren't aware, they are on our YouTube page, you can go back and watch them. So we've had a lot of discussion already on the budget with the council and the mayor, and all the department heads, and I appreciate the mayor having all the department heads available, um, just commend him for giving access, I was able to email, contact department heads and get all the questions answered ahead of time, and even at the Budget Committee meeting, so thank you, Mayor, appreciate that, I know the other council members do as well, so any other, any council members have any follow-up questions from the previous meetings? Councilman Fordice?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Glad you're here, thanks for all you do for our city, you're doing a fantastic job, and I really appreciate it, and I'm sure the community does. Can you just give me a brief summary on the salary raises and how you formulated that?
Yes.
I know you briefly went over it in the committee meetings, but just for the general public and for my.
Yeah, so I'm a, I'm a, I'm a firm believer in, uh, rewarding people with, uh, merit, so what the City of Marion has traditionally done in the past is just give a, a flat raise to everyone, and I think that, um, we incentivize better performance, better attendance, better everything by giving our employees raises based off of performance, so our, uh, each department head went through and, uh, analyzed their employees in their department, we have what's called, uh, uh, we did three, three months, six months, and also, that's all we've been in so far, three and six month reports on, uh, how people have performed, so it's not a shock or a surprise to any of our employees how raises were assessed, because they were, have been, um, reviewed, um, quarterly, so that's, that's the way we arrive on that.
Okay, thank you, and on, uh, some of the items like, uh, on the, uh, the fire, did we get the fire department settled on, on theirs, on their raise, right?
Yeah, their, their, their contract is complete at, uh, five and a half percent.
And the police department, we get that taken care of?
So the police department's negotiation, um, is in two thousand twenty-six, and right now I am, um, considering giving them a, a raise in the middle of their contract as well.
Okay, so we don't know what that's gonna be yet on police?
So for police, with their, um, their current budget is eight million, thirteen thousand dollars, and and what we're negotiating with those raises won't go above that, that bottom line of eight million, thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay, on the, on their budget, the public budget, and, and on, on your, uh, economic development, you have miscellaneous contractual services, three hundred thousand, can you break that out for me?
Yes, so, um, so there's a few different things, so the rea- the reason why I left another miscellaneous contractual service, because there's often some surprises, as we know, that happened this year, um, and we've had some three to four hour council meetings regarding those things, and I would try to do our best to avoid that unless you guys wanna keep doing it. Um, but, uh, thi- this is, gives me, uh, I guess I could have renamed it as, uh, Unexpected Projects or Future Projects Funds, so everything from, uh, from marketing to, um, extra help and developments, to, um, being able to assist in, um, some art development going on in our downtown, this gives me the latitude to be able to do some things, um, without having to come back to the council for the, the month process to have access to those funds.
Okay, thank you very much for that explanation, and, um, I know we kind of briefly went over a few other things, that we, we did get rid of the lobbyists, correct?
Yes.
That's, that's out of the budget.
Yeah, there's no lobbyists.
No lobbyists anymore. Uh, I think that's all the questions I have, Mayor, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fordice, any other council members with questions? Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass appropriation thirty-six dash two thousand twenty-four to a second reading in public hearing.
Motion by Councilman Kane, second by Councilman Klein, any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Additional appropriation thirty-six twenty twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget, we'll go to a second reading, public hearing at the next regular council meeting. And moving on to additional appropriation thirty-four dash twenty twenty-four, first hearing.
An ordinance of the City of Marion appropriating three hundred thousand dollars from the Edit Fund to the Center Township Trustee upon acquisition of the Estates of Serenity Cemetery. The cemetery is an extremely blighted property with historical significance in the city limits. This request is to help the trustee's office reach their goal of creating a large fund to help with maintenance and upkeep of the cemetery if they are able to acquire the cemetery. The money will not be transferred until proof of acquisition. Speaking, City Administration.
Actually, I think, uh, Deb, our use, the, so, um, Center Township Trustee Deb Kane is actually gonna speak, I will say, um, this is pigging back off of the previous one we had where we tabled, and, um, had the language rewritten, and we had to repost, um, per the DLGF, because we pretty much changed everything, the fund wording and all of that, so, um, Trustee Kane, go ahead.
So I'm not gonna speak long, but I wanted to again urge you to pass this ordinance on to second reading, public hearing. This is not for me as a trustee of Center Township, but for the many who came before you last month in the previous public hearing. For those headstones that are left uncared for, knocked off the foundation, damaged, or headstones that are set on top of another headstone to make it easier to mow and not replace upon the deceased grave, as you've seen the pictures portrayed, they should never be moved, ever. Gary, even though I'd already confirmed the city could appropriate money from the general fund to the township, you argued in the last meeting that your resource stated that the city could not do so. So again, like I confirmed, the cemetery boundaries need, I need need to correct that information as I made a personal call to the Director of Audit Services at State Board of Accounts, the expert who confirmed that it was accepted appropriation, the mayor has now requested the funds to become, to come out of the Edit Fund, which is still appropriate. In the eight years as a councilman, I believe I showed my work ethics as one to make sure that every I was dotted, T was crossed, that was why I voted no to the most recent shutdown business, Metal Source, as I did extensive research and realized that they would not be a good fit for the City of Marion, and they proved that the company was not, I was the only council member, president at that meeting that voted no, but I held to my grounds and beliefs, begging other members to vote no. I've not walked into this situation without doing the same extensive research and obtaining the appropriate professional expertise and advice. I want to update the council that I've received two letters from the Attorney General's Office, Todd Riquetta, stating that appears that my office is in a better position to assist and investigate further two complaints received by their office, updating their office of my results, I have submitted a reply with a full investigation, including pictures in my written response. I also just recently had a conversation with Preservation Specialists of DNR. His written response to me after speaking with other staff members and his supervisors advised further legal action should be taken, which is the same statement from both Real Estate Litigation Section Chief and Litigate Legislative Director from the Attorney General's Office in my video conference with them. I cannot pursue these routes without knowing that there will be funding to clean up and maintain the cemetery. I stated in meetings before, this is like buying a home. The finances need to be there before I sign any loan agreement. Please, help assist this funding to pursue and correct the situation that is affecting the families of the forty thousand plus buried on these sacred grounds. I could go on and on about all the conversations and research that I've had since we've recently met, but I will not, and I just will request that you vote yes, and also vote yes on the seventeenth of September at the public hearing. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, uh, Count, uh, Trustee Kane, unless she counts. Real quick, uh, just for anyone watching, I know some people are watching, um, and those in the audience, because we did change this and we added a section to it, I just wanna read it real quick, because people at home don't see it, um, because this was added to it, and I, part of our amendments that we had proposed to give it more teeth, and so I'm just gonna read it real quick, be it further ordained by the Common Council of the City of Marion, Indiana, Grant County, that the funds appropriated in Section One, which is the three hundred thousand, shall be held with the city and released to the Center Township Trustee only to be used for the cost of the Estates of Serenity Cemetery. The balance of the fund shall be transferred to the Center Township Trustee upon proof of acquisition of the Estates of Serenity Cemetery. The status of the fund shall be reviewed in four months or end of two thousand twenty-four calendar year. If the trustee has not acquired the Estates of Serenity Cemetery, if the trustee does not acquire the Estates of Serenity Cemetery in that time, then the fund shall revert to the Edit Fund, so that was added to it, and of course, if it doesn't happen by the end of the year, it doesn't stop the, the mayor from coming back and asking again, but it, it's just basically saying this isn't an indefinite hold on funds, um, and allows the city to gain, or pull, pull those funds back if, if it doesn't happen by the end of the year, so. And then, uh, Trustee Kane, was there any other updates from the county or anything?
Yes, I was at the Commissioners' meeting today, I'm not gonna pull a pun on that. Um, so they, they did announce that they have, um, put my request, they will put my request before the County Council for approval of the three hundred thousand upon, um, my report that I'm moving, continuing to move forward with the, the acquisition of the cemetery. So hopefully in October, November, I will know the positive and directive on that one.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, any council members with questions, Councilman Fordice? Okay, any council members with questions? Councilman Fordice?
Yeah, on this.
You need your mic? Thank you.
On this appropriation, it says that, uh, it's only to be used for the cost of the estates of Serenity Cemetery. Is that for purchasing it?
Well, for the cost of the estates of Serenity, the balance of the fund shall not be transferred upon, uh. Shall be transferred upon proof of acquisition, so.
So what's the cost of the estates of Serenity?
I don't know what that is. She would have to comment on that. You would have to ask her that.
Gary, I gave you the full, um, presentation earlier. In which the cost would cover the care of the cemetery, which would be the removal of trash. The extensive trash that's on the grounds. The initial mo- taking care of the dead trees and, and brush. And also the, um, cleaning of the headstones along with, um, if I need some of that funding. To help with accounting funding to rehabilitate the office. And the other buildings that are falling down, mausoleums.
Okay, thanks for that, Clerk. So you're not gonna use any of this money for the purchase of it, just for the maintenance and upkeep of it?
Well, there will be some litigation costs, which is a cost, which will not be, um, and here we shall not be taken until after this money.
So we're gonna, the, the three hundred thousand is to pay for litigation for an attorney? For the center township trustee to purchase this, or?
I don't know how much I'll need of that. There's, the litigation is not, is just in its beginning. And, um, that was part of, part of the discussion with the county council and with the city council, both.
So you do have an attorney that's in the midst of litigation with his attorney?
Yes.
Or with the state?
With his attorney and the state.
So you, your two attorneys are going, who's your attorney on this?
Uh, Ed, Ed, um. Yes, thank you, Ed Merchant.
And do you guys have a contract, a tentative offer to buy it or purchase it, or?
I'm not, I'm not gonna go in, in the public, I'm, in the public, I'm not gonna answer those questions. I, it, we're in litigation. I, I would be more than happy to answer those questions in private, but I'm not gonna put myself in a public. With those answers while I'm, since I'm in the middle of litigation, so thank you.
So, we don't know exactly what this is gonna go for. I mean, I, I'm just asking, if you've got an attorney through the center township trustee. Why should we pay for litigation out of it? You just said that we're gonna part of the cost of this three hundred thousands for litigation.
Well, I have, I have legal fees in my budget, but if I can, if I need to add to that budget, I, I will need to be able to take some of this funding. But that was discussed in the previous meetings.
Okay, and I'm not disagreeing with you. The cemetery needs help. It does. It needs a lot of help, and the owner knows that. Have you spoken with the owner?
Multiple times, sir.
You have? Have you sat down and spoke with him?
Multiple times. I mean, yes.
There is no owner right now.
And he, he is not an own, he doesn't own the cemetery. The Marion Cemetery Corporation, which is currently dissolved, and I've not heard back from the secretary of state. I inquired to see if they have resolved that. I've not heard back, so there, he does not own it. He is just, um, mowing.
Okay, well, he's the owner of the corporation.
No, he's not. He's the president of the corporation, and there's a secretary.
Which controls the cemetery.
The corporation controls the cemetery.
Right, and he's the president of the corporation.
And there's a secretary of corporation.
There is no secretary anymore.
Craig Persinger is the secretary.
Craig resigned.
That has not been notified to me. That is on the paper.
Hold on one moment, hold on. I'm just trying to, we could go a lot of rabbit holes, that is.
City should get into the legal aspect of paying for attorney, purchasing the cemetery.
There may not be, it may come out of there, and we've told, we've told multiple times what this goes for.
Microphone.
It's for the care of the cemetery.
I understand, I'm talking to Deb, I'm talking to Deb right now, Brian.
Well, we're just, we're, we're a council, we're all having a discussion about it, so I think it's appropriate that we all have a discussion since this is now our fourth hearing on this. So we've had plenty of opportunities. Well, let me finish. We've had plenty, oh, no, I'm talking right now. I have the floor. I, I have the floor right now. This is a discussion right now. Well, this is our fourth hearing. We're not going into million rabbit holes. You are.
Appropriations are not to be used for, for the taxpayers and citizens of Marion, Indiana.
Sure, you're absolutely right. You can ask questions, yes. Sure, and as president, I was speaking as well. Well, you're right, I can. So go ahead and finish your point of order, finish your questioning on our fourth hearing on this. Go ahead, finish.
As you are. So anyhow, I'm just curious if you had contacted him and made him an offer because I had heard.
Multiple times, sir.
What, so what was the offer? Because he's not aware of it.
He declined it.
I talked to him today.
I'm in litigation. I'm not gonna give you that in public.
I talked to him today and he says there's no offer on the table. I'm just asking what, which way we're going on this, whether you're gonna try to take it through the state and it's gonna be a legal battle.
I'm in.
Or you're trying to purchase it.
I'm not gonna answer those because I'm in litigation with my lawyer. And I can, once he approves, that I can give that information, I will give that to you.
Because he is valid with his LLC with the state.
I have not heard that confirmation and I, I inquired of that.
Well, I've got a copy of the certificate for the LLC that is up to date, and that he's current. So I'm just saying, this says that he is the president of the LLC for the cemetery. And it's by Diego Morales, Secretary of State.
Thank you.
I'm gonna add to this, so, I would just want to add real quick. This ordinance is written, hold on one second, this ordinance is written so that money is not transferred until there's proof of acquisition. What happens between now and that acquisition through this legal process is the trustee's office and how they handle it. If you're not for it, vote against it. If you're for it, vote for it, but we are not here as a council. To interject in between litigation between the trustee's office and the corporation. That is not our role. Our role is to approve funding based on proof of acquisition. We will not transfer this money. Until proof has been shown that she, as the trustee, has acquired the cemetery. That's it. This is, this is why I added this wording to it. So it gave us as a city more teeth to protect ourselves, so if it doesn't go through, whatever happens if litigation fails. Great, money reverts back at the end of the year, and they gotta come back and give another update, ask for another funding question. This is exactly why I added this, Councilman Fordice, is for your points to say, hey. If this doesn't go through, if it gets all nasty and disgusting, whatever. Okay, at the end of the year, it falls off and you gotta come back and give us an update and ask for it again. So, I, I just don't want us to keep getting in between the legal stuff, that, that's not our role as a council. Well, you're contacting the cemetery and getting, yeah.
Is to find out what's going on with the cemetery.
The purpose of this is to approve funding or not based on acquisition.
Ongoing business and we're trying to buy it out, or we're trying to take it over on a hostile takeover through the state.
We aren't trying to do anything as a council. The trustee's office is.
Then we're gonna be a part of it.
We're gonna fund money if it's acquired. I'm not sure, I mean, I mean, it's written right here, proof of acquisition. We as a council and a city are not, hold on, we're not acquiring anything. We're not part of this legal process. That's it. If you're not, if you're not for it, then vote against it.
Point of order, President, uh, I have got the right to ask these questions on the appropriation for the amount of money. And, and the right for the taxpayers to know what we're gonna do with their money. And if we're gonna buy it, and if the city's gonna be involved in buying it. Because I don't think the taxpayers of the city of Marion want to purchase the cemetery. Or be involved in purchasing the cemetery and have an ongoing maintenance on it. That's my purpose of the questions and inquiring about it. And I think the best way to do it is to talk to the owner and talk to Deb and see what's going on. I understand her position. I did not say that the cemetery did not need help and work and service. I understand that.
May I ask you a question?
And the families need respect on their death burial gravestones and their, their burial cemeteries lots. I understand that.
Gary, may I ask you a question?
Now I'm getting interrupted all the way around, and I thought I had the floor.
Have you come to me and asked me any questions?
I was asking you the questions.
Did you come to me personally and ask me any questions like you did all these other people? Have you come to me personally?
All whatever people. You've came up and proposed something for the cemetery. I'm just checking on the owner.
Okay.
And give his part of you and his side of the story to see what's going on.
And then I.
To see if we can come to an agreement on.
Okay, hold on one second. Trustee Kane, hold on.
Let me.
Count, hold on one second, trustee Kane, hold on one second. Councilman Fordice, if you have any remaining questions, you have the floor, go ahead and finish your questions.
That, well, thank you. I appreciate that. So anyhow, um, that was my point, whether we were, made an offer, we're trying to buy it, we're going through the state, you're trying to take it over as a. Hostile takeover through a lawsuit through the state, or?
All the.
How we're gonna acquire it?
All the above may be a possibility, but the three hundred thousand as, as in the presentation that I gave to you last month. Two hundred thousand is blight illumination removal, falling down buildings, semi trailer. Remove dead trees, large weeds, bush trash, fence removal, remodel cemetery office building, one hundred thousand dollars. Headstone cleaning, wet and forget, thirty-seven ninety-seven at, at Happy Gallon is. Three hundred and seventy-five to one thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet, bioshield, ninety-nine dollars at tw- twenty-seven point five gallons is. Three thousand three hundred and ninety to nine thousand forty-one square feet.
Okay, so it, it's still, you're going through a, a legal process with him, which he's unaware of, and his attorney.
That's the township's legal process, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I was just inquiring that what, what, which direction we were going on this.
That's my process, and I'm not gonna speak on that in a public, when I'm in litigation with a lawyer. I do not appreciate that laugh.
Well, I, I, you know, I have to because it's the city's money and the taxpayer's money, and I think they've got the right to know. What, which way we're going, if it's gonna be an extended litigation. You, you just said that we're gonna have legal costs.
I don't have time to do extended litigation. I have to have this done by December.
Well, I, that's why I was asking. I mean, you could eat up three hundred thousand dollars in litigation real quick. So, I, I didn't know if you had an offer on the table to him, or you were taking it a desperate route.
Already answered that. I'm sorry, Ms. President, I'm not, I cannot continue to. Try and answer questions I can't answer because I'm in litigation with the lawyer right now.
That's all the questions I have on that.
Any other council members with questions? Vice President Calgill.
Not so much a question, just try to clarify things. The city is not buying this. The city is not doing anything other than. Giving money to the center township trustee's office so that they can handle it. That's all, there's nothing else legal to city. I mean, we've talked about these things and discussed these things over and over. I don't know why. Everybody else understands it, but anyway. And the litigation part, it may not be hardly anything. Um, there's been two offers to him. He's rejected both offers. He, his counteroffer is ridiculous. It's not even where close to where he should be getting it. So that's why we're in that process. Everything that she's doing is completely legal, up to date. I mean. Some of these questions are just repetitive questions over and over that we keep answering. It originally, you know, it was because it's guarantee you it's not the city limits. Well, we showed, yes, it is the city limits. Then it was, well, you can't take it from a privately owned places. Yes, you can take it privately. I mean, question after question of why you've been against it has been answered over and over. And I, and I agree with you. Either vote no or vote yes, but it's ridiculous.
Well, I would hope that you and, and Councilman Kane would abstain on this since you're involved in it. And you, and you personally work for the township trustee. I would think ethically.
Why, why does that have to do anything with?
Well, I would just think ethically, since you work for her.
Okay, all right, oh, all right, now, now, now it's too much. This is too much. We're either gonna vote for this or we're not. This is our fourth hearing. We added teeth to this ordinance, started all over again. To protect the city. This is pretty cut and dry, and I'm gonna go out and say, if we would poll every single person in this city, find me one person other than the. Owner of the cemetery that would say, this is a horrible idea. Uh, I, there's hardly anybody that would be probably against this. We saw all these people speak, everybody I've ran into public. This is my opinion, I'm just saying that. Pull your, pull your constituents, find out, but this is now our fourth hearing, and, and essentially. I mean, this might have already been done if we hadn't added some teeth to this, corrected where the money was going. And protected the city. If nothing gets done with this by the end of the year, it all hits a reset button. It's that plain and simple. So, you know, we're not getting involved in litigation, we're not gonna rehash that. This is not our process. We're just simply stating as a city, as council members, and as a mayor. Do we or do we not support? Turning this, one of the most blighted properties in the city around. We talk about blight all year, and all of us have approved millions of dollars in blight removal. But this is one of those disrespectful pieces of light. The city actually takes over private property and tears down houses and puts a lien against it. Not much different in my eyes. If somebody isn't maintaining their house and it's falling apart, we go through a legal process. We're going through it right now, and we tear that house down. What house is any different? This is the nastiest quote house in the city. This is a house to thirty-eight thousand dead citizens in this city. And this house has been burning down for way too long. I have zero relatives there, but I get angry about it. Because I can only imagine how I'd feel when I drive, I drove by there today. And just couldn't, I mean, I just got angry. This is a blighted property. We are simply as a council and as a city saying, we support restoring this blighted property. If the trustee's office is able to acquire it. That's it, that's the bottom line. Any other council members with questions?
Mr. President, I would like to move this. Mr. President, I would like to move this item onto a second reading and public hearing.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Brunner to pass this to a second reading, public hearing. I have a second by Councilwoman Devine. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
No.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Proper, additional appropriation thirty-four twenty twenty-four will move to a second reading, public hearing at the next council meeting. Moving on to additional appropriation thirty-five twenty twenty-four, first reading.
In ordinance of the city of Marion appropriating the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars from the edit fund. To the Parks Department for the city of Marion Parks Game Time Grant for Matter Park Playground Equipment. There is a need for new playground equipment for the two to five-year-olds playground down the hill from Shelter Two at Matter Park. The current one will not pass inspection and is over thirty years old. This request is to meet the matching funds requirement for the game time grant. Speaking, city administration.
Welcome.
Good evening. So we come before you asking for, um, I'm sorry, I thought I pushed it. Um, so thirty-five thousand dollars to match some funds that the parks, um, has, um, put away, um, over at community foundation. We have forty thousand dollars of the seventy-five thousand dollars that it requires for a hundred percent matching grant. This will be the third time that we have applied, um, for. This will be the third time that we have applied for this grant since two thousand seventeen, when Belinda Hussong was our park director then, and we got twenty thousand dollar grant from them then. I applied for it in two thousand twenty, and we were able to get a hundred thousand dollars worth of new playground equipment, and then we have applied for it again. I supplied all of you the packet, and the first page is the approval letter where we've been approved for the grant. So we would have seventy-five thousand dollars of city money, and they would match the seventy-five thousand dollars. I've also included pictures of the playground as it sits right now, on the playground structure there, as you can see caution tape and things around it. It's over thirty years old, and we're unable to get repair parts for this playground, and then we've attached some pictures, renderings of what a new possible playground could possibly look like with the funds from the grant. And then Jeff has some figures he'd like to share with you.
Welcome, Dr. Reyes.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everybody. What I'd like, so you have a grant paper number that looks similar to this with some numbers on it. Just ran some basic numbers for everybody to see kind of where we will be at with the money requested, so we'll start with the second line. If you see, Parks already has forty thousand dollars set aside in their community foundation account that they plan on putting towards this. If we use just the forty thousand dollars that they have, Sinclair will match us up to seventy-two thousand, so we would receive seventy-two thousand dollars for this potential playground. That's a, that's a sixty percent match that they do with cash that we have upfront. Now, if we, if we get an additional, we're asking for thirty-five thousand dollars because they will match up to a hundred percent of seventy-five thousand dollars. So if we get the thirty-five thousand dollars, we'll get the hundred and fifty thousand that we'll be able to put towards this, these new two to five-year-old playgrounds. If we don't get the money appropriated of thirty-five thousand, we'll potentially lose what's in red, their seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of playground equipment from them, based on the match. So it's a forty percent increase with the thirty-five thousand.
So just questioned, the hundred and fifty thousand, is that, is covering all of this?
Yes, I mean, that's just a rendering they put together for up to the hundred and fifty thousand dollars of kind of pieces that could go in there. We have the opportunity to pick our pieces, so I wouldn't say the rendering would be exactly that, but.
So can you break down, like, how much of it's equipment versus, like, excavation and?
It's all structure.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have to play, pay for the mulch that would go down afterwards separately.
Okay.
And knowing kind of timeframes of this, the mulch was planned to be put down next year after all the structures were in and the snow was gone, so it'd be a fresh playground, fresh playground mulch next year as we go into peak seasons.
And then according to the grant itself, we have to place our orders by October twenty-fifth for the matching funds, so we would be requesting those funds by then.
Great, thank you so much. Any council members with questions?
Is that mulch in the budget for next year?
Not really built in, but I mean, we'll make do.
And this is the playground that's next to the shelter, next to the tennis courts?
At the bottom of the hill of Shelter Two, next to the tennis courts.
Maybe it's not really associated with this grant, but as far as mulch goes, do we use just bark mulch or like rubber mulch?
It has to be a certain kind of mulch to make ADA compliant for playground structure, so it's more expensive than regular mulch, so I'm not really sure what the cost would be for that.
Any other council members? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass appropriation ordinance number thirty-five, two thousand twenty-four, to a second reading and public hearing.
Motion by councilman Kane, the second by councilman Klein. Any other discussion? Madam clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Additional appropriation thirty-five, twenty twenty-four will go to a second reading public hearing, and moving into the new category announcements, do any council members have any announcements for the community or the mayor? Would you like to share any announcements? And could you actually, the next city cleanup, do you remember that? Do you have that date?
October fifth.
October fifth is the next city cleanup, so everyone just keep an eye out for that. Okay, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by councilman Kane, second by vice president Calgill. Any discussion? Madam clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Meetings adjourned, thank you.